At 7:06 PM for the reorganization meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dudley.
Here.
Attorney Members Costin.
Here.
Mott.
Here.
Dela Ripa.
Here.
Hudson.
President.
Sondemeyer.
President.
Yes.
Here. Also with us are Borough Clerk Jane McCarthy, our Borough Attorney Fred Semrau, and alongside Jane is Brianna Calabro, who is our tax office staff but is clerk in training, and she joins us. Welcome, Bree, to you. And I told Bree the initiation was she had to sing the National Anthem. She got a little nervous, so I decided not to do that.
You got two?
I would first like to welcome everyone here this evening, and especially wish everyone a very happy and especially a healthy new year. I would just like to acknowledge a few of our guests this evening, and I truly appreciate you being here, starting with our state senator, Mr. Gerald Carnally. Thank you, Senator, for being here. We also have our Assemblyman, Mr. Robert Off, Assemblyman. Freeholder TJ Best, freeholder. We have our Bloomingdale Democratic Leader, Mr. Bernie Groom. Bernie, thank you. And the finest Chief of Police in the land, Chief Joe Earl. What we will do first this evening is swear in Councilwoman Hudson and then Councilman Tony Costa. I'm sure we'll give a few remarks, and I would like to give a brief statement of borough. And we will be moving 94 of our resolutions in one motion this evening because the agenda is completely listing every appointment, so as though unknowns is clearly there. We will appoint you to a committee. Professionals will be, so that will all be done in one motion. And then we will take a recess to swear, and then anyone who's here this evening, and then the council has two pre-orders to introduce this evening. So with that said, it is served me my pleasure to invite Councilwoman Dawn Hudson to the dais, to the podium. I'll wait for Dawn. Before I invite Dawn's family to the podium, I just wanted to congratulate you on your reelection, so well-deserving, and I'm proud to call you my friend, and I look forward to working with you for at least three more years, to handle me for three more years. And now sincerely, Dawn, you have a wonderful, strong work ethic professionally and also for the borough, Loomis. She works tirelessly for the borough as well at the fire department, and we do there, too. So Loomis does best to have you. I'm very proud of you and the co-achieved 2017. With that said, I would like to invite Dawn's family, her husband Mike, her daughter Bella, and her son Paul, if you'd join us at the podium. I ask that maybe the kids can hold the Bible, and if Mom would place her left hand on the Bible and raise your right, Dawn, and simply repeat after me. I will go slow. I, Dawn Hudson.
I, Dawn Hudson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of Office of Councilwoman.
All the duties of the Office of Councilwoman.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh.
Thank you.
John, please. The family picture, come on.
Family picture.
Happy New Year, everyone. The honor of being elected by the residents of Bloomingdale to a council term is something that I will never forget. It's an honor and it's a privilege. The residents have put their trust in me to do what is right for Bloomingdale. That's something that I also will not forget, that I will keep in mind with every decision that I make as I serve the borough. I've seen such positive changes in Bloomingdale in the last few years. These changes wouldn't be possible without the leadership and teamwork of the current council. We've had to make some difficult decisions, and we don't always agree, but we work together, and most importantly, we have a common goal: to make Bloomingdale a better place, period. Making Bloomingdale a better place doesn't just involve the mayor and council. There are many people that make this town better: the employees and the volunteers of the borough. We have the finest police department, the best fire department, our DPW, our water department, our finance department, tax, building, animal control, the office staff, all volunteers. They make this community what it is. The last three years on the council has truly given me a new appreciation for how hard each and every one of them work, and I want to thank each and every one of them. Lastly, as much as I thank the residents, I can't forget to thank my family, my husband Mike, my daughter Bella, and my son Paul. Your support is overwhelming. They make me a better person, and they're the reason I'm here today, and I love them. So thank you all again, and I hope you all have a very happy, healthy new year.
Congratulations. This time, I'm honored to invite Mr. Anthony Costa. Before I use the mic. Thank you. Again, after Dawn, I'm very honored to work with Tony. I've known Tony, oh gosh, by close to 20 years, from Little League baseball days with our older sons. And Tony's always going to dedicate a family man, dedicate two whatever he does, both professionally and in the borough. Every council person has their own thing, how they operate. Everyone's different. Everyone brings such important talent to the borough from all different levels. And Tony fits that bill. And Tony, you're an asset to our governing body. Proud to serve with you and call you a friend as well. I would like to invite Tony's wife, Donna, up to see if you would please join us and help with the swearing in. How we...
Good night.
Thank you. It's you. You hold the Bible. Tony, if you place your left hand and raise your right, and simply repeat after me. I, Anthony Costa.
I, Anthony Costa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Councilman.
Of Councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'll make a quick. Again, I didn't have anything written down. I'm quite humbled by the people of Bloomingdale re-electing me for my second term as councilman. Going into 2017, I'm very happy to work with the current sitting council and the mayor and every department as well: fire, police, DPW. We've got a really good group of individuals, commissions and so forth that volunteer. And again, I am really looking forward to making 2017 even a better three years in term as we go into it than my first term. A lot of difficult decisions, and I think we got through them. And I think we're all on, have one common goal, and that's to make Bloomingdale a better place to live. Thank everybody tonight. Thank you. You know, I'm just saying, to freeholder best, when it's the second time around, you know, we just want to get to work. Because I was looking on Facebook in other towns where thousands of miles serve as mayor, and they had auditoriums for reorganization, and primarily because it was a new regime, a new party that hadn't served for 40 years, et cetera. But I'm proud of what we have here, and Tony and Dawn, seriously, we just want to get to work. Again, I do want to welcome everyone, and all that I talk about this evening in my state of the borough would not be possible without the commitment and hard work of the governing body you see behind me. We met Tony and Dawn, Councilman Mike Sondemeyer, Councilman John Demato, Ray Yasni, and Rich Delaripa. Again, workforce for our borough, and without them, nothing we talk about will be positive changes would be possible. We all quickly pile our ideas together, and we support my efforts, and we are very proud and thank all of you for everything that you do. It's important, too, to thank our staff, starting with Jane McCarthy, who I call the glue of the borough. For how many years, Jane?
Almost 30.
Almost 30 years in the borough of Bloomingdale. Jane is the finest clerk, again, a dear friend of mine. Over the years, we've served together, and it's because of Jane and our Deputy Clerk Terry and our Treasurer Sherry and our tax workers, Barbara and Bree, that that made my job easy. They get the work done, they get it done professionally, and serve our residents on the highest, finest standard. It's important that I always thank Chief Joe Earl. Bloomingdale Police Department by far is the best, and Joe, your leadership shows that. I thank you for your friendship and your leadership, and I look forward to 2017. Every department helping works keeping our town clean and safe, providing the services we all are accustomed to. Our fire department, actually Dawn's husband Mike is the head of our emergency management, and I thank Mike for all his work, and he's an ex-fire department. And I thank him in the fire department, especially our new chief, you saw on Sunday, Tony Marciano, and I know he has the support of the fire department as well as the governing body to move forward. Everyone from our shelter to our animal control to our senior coordinator to our library director, who serve our children and all our residents, who go above and beyond, and their commitment to our borough is unsurpassed. And I especially want to thank all our volunteers, our commissioners on all the boards in town. I mentioned Bernie Groom before. Bernie Groom heads our search and rescue, which is an integral part of our community, and it's actually quite busy saving people because we have such a large area of open space, all too often. And me and his team do a exemplary job in that. I'd like to thank Bill Kraft, who's here with us this evening. He is kind of my personal confidant. I respect Bill immensely. I go to Will with ideas and thoughts, and he's always there to listen and help me through some tough decisions we have to make. We have Nadia Samir. Nadia is going to be appointed this evening to Economic Development Commission, new to Bloomingdale. When is she with him?
Bloomingdale, last weekend of July.
Last weekend of July. We've got to meet Nadia at our fall festival, and Paul's upstairs, and says, "I'm here in March." So I appreciate you being here, and your husband walking to the community. Our professionals, again, make us look good. And that starts first with Fred Semrau. Fred Semrau, his staff, beyond all my years of serving in council for many, 60 years in government, much far the best Borough Attorney I've ever experienced, not only professionally but as a friend. And I think that goes for the entire governing body. He's a gentleman, he's a pro, and he's always there for us when we need you. So to the bottom of my heart, I thank you for all of you do. Paul Darmofsky, our Borough Engineer, who I always joke when I speak about Paul, that how crazy they drive him with finding projects completed and the like, and we get things done because I'm a candidate, and Paul's really good with us, and I thank you, Paul, for that. Our Senator and Assemblyman, I thank because the last sentence is, "They've served us for a few years," and in the beginning, I was concerned because primarily Burton County was their area of service with Frank the Legs, Whoop the Legs, making, "Ah, a little old Bloomingdale." But you guys stepped up in your service, but when I need you, you're there. So even off, you respond immediately. When I have a bill, you support or oppose, I judge you, and I know your voice, our opinions, your powers to be, and I thank you for that message. TJ Best, being you're the only freeholder here, I can say you're my favorite freeholder. I'm serious. TJ has been a friend to Bloomingdale as all the freeholders and the administrator. Whether it be just supporting the services that you provide, matter of fact, on Last Blizzard, TJ's live Facebook, he helped Wasten Snow, then he sure hammered Turplin Department, and that's many freeholders I know do that. But they've supported all our efforts, all our recreation funding, our Community Development Block grant, and most recently did the hard work with Councilwoman Hudson, our community garden, which will be opening next spring. TJ was a big part of getting this funding for that as well. So all of you, thank you, and it is because of all of you is one of the main reasons I serve, and you make my service a lot easier. Now, as we begin 2017, it is certainly with a bright outlook, and that is due to the hard work from this governing body, DC, behind me. Just a few of the improvements we've done, and this is just a few. We have stabilized our tax rate over the last four years. We continue capital investment. In four years, we have paved over 60% of our roads, and at the same time, reduced our debt over $2 million. We continue to invest in infrastructure by completing sewer and water full replacement jobs. We have completed Star Lake and Ryerson Road this year, which brings us up to seven roads fully utility replacement. We received over $3 million in grants since 2012, whether they be recreation, gaming, utility work, all of which has a direct impact to our taxpayers' rate and has a complete complement to this governing body behind me. I'm very proud. Last year, we petitioned strongly FEMA, and were able to remove 150 homes that were erroneously mapped in a flood zone for the past ever, forever. And these 150 homes now are no longer in the flood zone. We have saved millions and millions of dollars in premium for these homeowners, so I'm very proud of that. With the help of FEMA, we obtained grants for generators which will be installed in the next few weeks at our Fire Department's Hall and our Senior Citizenship Center to be used as shelters and warming stations in time of an emergency. I'm very proud that project will come to fruition this year. We continue flood mitigation projects, and we'll continue in 2017 challenging FEMA because we do feel, I'm quite confident, there are additional momentary errors throughout town. I'm proud that we brought the Mayor's Wellness Campaign to the borough, living a healthy lifestyle, instilling that standard to our residents with programs from Mayor's Walks to Late Index Loss Contest, like blood pressure monitoring, et cetera. We continue again to stabilize our tax rate with smart planning. We controlling, we have controlled our municipal budget over the last three years with an increase no greater than 1.7%, which is quite a feat considering the rising cost of health care, pensions, and contractual obligations, considering the cost of running the borough. We require the lower department heads to create budgets based on need rather than simply increasing here every year. We continue to lower the borough's debt, at the same time make a large investment to the borough, and attribute a lot of that creative financing to Councilman Yasni, Councilman Rich Delaripa, who are on the Budget Committee and have a professional financial background. And as I said earlier, everyone puts something to the table, but they bring, it's absolutely incredibly beneficial. We have just concluded a four-year difficult negotiation with Silicon Utilities that will bring the much-needed revenue to ensure a very bright future in our borough. Now, while this was a difficult decision, we know that this increase of annual revenue in excess of $2 million annually and one-time fees in excess of $12 million will be the investment the borough needs to move along, and will drastically reduce our debt and potentially, strong reality, potentially lower our municipal tax rate. A very important out of this became a certified affordable housing plan. We're one of the first five municipalities in the state of New Jersey to get a Superior Corp. Order to certify a affordable housing plan. That is the first time since 2004 that the borough's been protected under the affordable housing walls. And what does that mean? It means we now control or invest in it. We control where we want development rather than the courts. So as you can see, and that's just a few, very few of the items that we've completed in the last number of years. I look forward to 2017 as we continue that progress. We will continue to follow our 10-year road paint plan, sidewalk and curbing projects, as well as our utility investment. We will invest in our fire department substantially this year with the need, which is greatly needed, of self-contained breathing apparatus. We apply for a grant to the help of our fire department, but if that does not come to fruition, we will fund that because it is desperately needed to protect and is highly limited to serve our community. We will continue to invest in recreation, with Phase Two of the Walter G. Burden Drainage Project. Again, just to be bold and frankly, for your funding there, of $200,000, that will help us continue and see that project to fruition. You'll see the opening, as I mentioned earlier, of the community garden. A huge thank you to Councilwoman Hudson, and we'll see that opening in the spring. And finally, I said, I've said this before, but then we were at the mercy of the DVD, we will see the opening of Swan Park in downtown Jewel, an island upon a river in our town. My dream is that in 2017, that this park is reopened and is utilized for fairs and concerts, as well as become a beautiful botanical garden. We are also currently negotiating with developers. Developers ultimately will be named as a redeveloper, hopefully in the first quarter of this year, who will not only make the smart growth become a reality, they will also commit to our downtown revitalization and implement the Earl's Vision Plan once and for all. This will result in a more desirable tax rate and attract young families, and a reduction in our high sewer rates as well, and provide a thriving downtown with shops and cafes that we all can be proud of. So in closing, I thank you all for being here tonight. It is our residents who are the backbone of the community, and I challenge you to get involved in our community, whether it be coaching, sports team, serve on a commission, or simply email me suggestions and ideas. I consider this community to be a team, from the mayor and council, to the staff, to the volunteers, to all our residents, for all members of that team. And if we all strive for the same goal of making Bloomingdale the best it can be, then we have no choice but to succeed. So again, Godspeed. Happy Happy New Year to you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for that. I would like to, before I take the dais. I'd like to make a small presentation. Again, we have so many valuable residents who lend a hand and serve, and are toward the commissions, but there's one individual I mentioned earlier in my comments, Mr. Bill Kraft. Mr. Bill Kraft, and I call him a confidant because he's just such a level-headed, smart guy. And, you know, what he provided me, you probably don't know. He just bounces things off you because you're, you're just, you're like, I call Jane Switzerland, you're hot like Switzerland, where you do not take a political side, you remember that realm, you just get it from the heart, it was right for the borough. So I appreciate what you do for me, what you do for the borough, and I just, as a small token, present you with a key to the city. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we've got 100 resolutions to do in three minutes, so people get it. So again, thank you, everyone. At this time, the first order of business, there is no executive, early executive session. There are no non-agenda items, though. On the agenda, which may appear blank, is our appointment of our qualified purchasing agent, which will be Mr. Richard Coons, and two appointments on the Recreation Commission that are not on the agenda: Barbie Neko and Roberto Alvarado, and an appointment on the Ordinance Review Committee, Mr. Brian Guinan. Those are the only names that have been omitted, or actually, confirmation was made after the agenda was published. At this time, I would ask Councilman Sondemeyer to make a motion for our council president.
Mayor, I would like to move that we appointed Councilwoman Dawn Hudson as the council president for 2017.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mike, for your year of service, and Dawn, I welcome you aboard, and I, again, promise I won't miss any meetings, but if I do, I know it's in good hands with both of you. So if you guys want to maybe just switch your seats before we proceed.
So is mine.
Thank you very much. Now, at this time, governing body, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolutions 2017 1.1 through 1.94. And as I stated earlier, everything is published on the agenda. There's no question of who sits and where, and what appointments are being made. This is why I'm moving it into bulk motion. Do I have that motion first?
So moved.
Is there any discussion or comments?
We need to open up the public comment first.
Open the public comment?
Um, I...
You shouldn't. Let's just open it anyways, right?
Okay, then, all right, no motion was made, and I do apologize. At this time, do I have a motion for early public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, motion to close.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, thank you very much for pointing that out. Again, motion for 2017 1.1 through 1.94 for all our professional appointments, our boards and commissions, and I thank all those who serve, and they're clearly listed here, although some are direct mayoral appointments, I'm including them in a consent of the governing body. Who makes that motion, please?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Attorney Members Costin.
Yes.
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 Thank you. At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to go back to number 10 and adopt the resolution for the bylaws?
That was included.
That was included?
Yeah, 1 through 94, I included. I went out of order on the council president appointment, but we're good with all the resolutions. So we'll take a five-minute recess. I do want to swear in Nadia and Bernie and Bill's here and a few other, Paul, our engineer, and Fred, if you would join me, and any council member sitting on the board or commission. But we'll do that, and then we will resume with our three ordinances. Good? We will resume at 7:41. Is the mic on? Again, 7:41, we shall resume. Wait for councilmen. Before we... I ask for introductions of our ordinances by title. Councilman Delaripa needs to abstain from Resolution...
93.
93.
Just as it pertains to Verizon.
As it pertains to Verizon, and...
A recusal for that.
Recusal. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I need a motion to introduce by title, Ordinance 1, 2017, amending fee ordinance to include donations for our 100th Anniversary Committee. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me? 24th, second, and final reading?
Yeah, we'll be okay, yeah.
That's it, yes, thank you. Item U, I need a motion to introduce Ordinance 2-2017, amending Chapter 92 zoning, Article 11 definitions. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just so everyone, this is just housekeeping. We've codified 92. This is just definitions on defining stories and what pertains to defining the stories to a dwelling. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Mr. Demott.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Yes.
Sondemeyer.
Yes.
And that is also second and final reading, 7:00 PM, January 24th.
And that's the ordinance of Earl's Home, and we have the 6th Circuit, and we have Chapter 92 zoning, Article 11, definitions of the whole of Earl's Home.
Thank you. And who will move introduction of Ordinance 3, 2017, authorizing Chapter 69 of the Admissible Code, Site Plan and Subdivision?
So moved.
Second.
Just discussion there. This, again, is housekeeping, adding checklists and bringing it up to speed. We have not codified, meaning putting it in the books, on the website, the site plan to the subdivision since the early 2000s, probably, so, or even older, right? Longer than that?